Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Cedar Falls Board of Education to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. The first order is a public hearing under item B for Aldridge Elementary School project. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of hearing for the 2017 Aldridge Elementary School. This notice was published in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Courier on December 22, 2016. The board will now hold a hearing. So is there anyone that would like to speak to the Aldridge Elementary? If you do, please come to the mic. Hearing and seeing none, the hearing is over and we will move on then to the consent agenda. Item C on the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second? Second? All in favor? Any questions about the consent agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Moving on to item D, public comment. We have no public comment?
No, we have nobody that requests public comment this evening.
All right, thank you. Moving on to communications, Julie.
Thank you. Welcome back. I hope everyone had a fantastic winter break. I guess since we've been back, we haven't been in school very long, so there's not really much to report back to you guys. I do know that Student Senate is obviously still working for Dance Marathon and getting towards that, which will be February 17th, 7 to 10. We're actually hosting, and the date will be confirmed, I believe, next week. But as of right now, January 28th, that's Saturday, Student Senate is teaming up with you and I Dance Marathon, and we're doing a prom dress backslash, like formal dress sale, and like a lot of those, the pricing details and all that will be determined later on. But basically, if anyone in the community has an old prom dress they're willing to donate, or just any formal dress that they don't wear anymore, contact me or the high school immediately, preferably before the end of next week, just so we can kind of have an idea of how many people are donating and how many people are going to give and how much we need. We're going to do that. And as of right now, I'm pretty sure all dresses that aren't sold will be given back. But that's just a way, in case that you guys want to help volunteer and give back to the Dance Marathon, that it's a great way to do that. Otherwise, finals are this week, Wednesday and Thursday for students, and we have Friday off, so that's all I have for you guys. Thank you so much.
Julie, how'd you do with the coat collection?
Oh, coat drive.
Yes.
I don't have exact numbers, but that went really well.
Okay.
Miranda told me they had a lot of people donate from just school, the community, and like a lot more than they would guess. I think over 100 or something like that donated, so.
Great.
Really good.
Yeah, thank you.
Julie, this Dance Marathon goes, that money goes to where?
It's the Iowa Children's Hospital, I'm pretty sure is what we usually do.
That's one of their largest fundraisers.
Yeah.
It is.
Across the state, that's right.
Yes, it's a pretty big deal, so we're always excited to host it and help out, so yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks, Julie.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck on finals.
Moving on then to item F on the agenda, the RSP, RSP Associates Enrollment Trajectory Report. Clay.
Yes, we're excited to have Clay here this evening, and as we've talked now for the last several months, we have RSP back with us to talk enrollment projections as we look towards the future and how it impacts our school district. So thank you, Clay.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Patey and the board for the opportunity to come back and talk to your school board tonight and to your community about the updated enrollment data that we have and the report that we provided for you. RSP really feels privileged to be able to work with Cedar App, Cedar App, Cedar Falls School District. You certainly have a long tradition of quality education in the district, and it's easy to see why people moved to Cedar Falls and put their kids in your schools, simply because of the programs and services that you have and all the opportunities that you provide for the families. So we're really privileged to be a part of this project. It's an exciting time for you to have, talking about a new building and past the bond issue and all that, so again, we're very pleased to be a part of this planning that's going on. Wanted to just briefly show you what we'll talk about tonight, really three sections. We want to talk about the enrollment and demographics discussion, we want to talk a little bit about the development that's going on in your district, and then talk about the projections themselves, and then certainly whatever next steps might be taken. I think most of you are familiar with RSP and Associates. We've done a lot of work in Iowa. We were founded in 2003, and Rob Swartz, our CEO, sends his regards. We've got a lot of business going on, and so he's involved actually in another board meeting tonight. But we have a lot of experience with our GIS people and our consultants, and as you can see, we're working in a lot of places. We have, much of our work is here in Iowa, although we're working in a lot of different states, so proud to be a part of this process here tonight. Want to talk about the enrollment and demographic data. First of all, we want to give a thank you to a number of people because we would not be able to put these projects together and this data together without the cooperation, first of all, of people like Doug and Andy and Janelle here in the district, and then with the county and city officials from Blackhawk County, the city of Cedar Falls, the Census Bureau, and then Rob has the opportunity also to meet with developers and the builders in the district. So we thank those folks for a lot of the things that we get to put these reports together. If I could give you the short story, and we didn't go through the rest of this process tonight with this presentation, I would leave you with three things, and this is kind of the short story, and we'll talk more about that. But what we project is over the next 10 years, you're going to see an enrollment increase of about 1,000 students. 500 of those will be in the next five years, 570, and then 400 in the following five years. So, and this is a little bit down from our last presentation that we made to you, report. I think we were at, I didn't bring that number, but I believe it was about 1,080 students over that 10-year period. So about a 10-student decrease per year over the next 10 years, which is not really that significant. Capacity issues, certainly with your new elementary school coming onboard, that's going to alleviate some of the problems that you have with your elementary enrollment. You're going to have capacity challenges that are going to be expected at three elementaries over the next 10 years. Cedar Heights and Hanson, and actually, the new building that you build in 10 years will, we're projecting that to be full. Junior high-wise, you'll have adequate district-wide junior high capacity through '23, '24, where in '24, '25, Pete Junior High will be over its building capacity. And then I think we're all aware of the considerable capacity challenges that you're going to have at Cedar Falls High School beginning in 1920.
If I could interject real quick, the note there when it talks about Aldridge Elementary in 10 years could be over capacity, that's assuming that it's a three-section building.
Thank you for that clarification.
Correct. We've talked about potentially making that a four-section building just from the start of the process.
Right, that'd be the capacity, I think a 525 would be the three-section, so.
Follow-on question for that, sorry, is if it's a four-section, does it have the capacity necessary for all 10 years?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Then lastly, there's going to be quite a bit of residential development opportunities that are going to exist in your community, which is going to lead to increased enrollment. And as long as the developments are affordable and the economy stays positive, then we believe all those things will hold true. We provided a district map in the materials for you. There's also an elementary map that points out the current boundary lines that you have in the district. We have an elementary map from 2018 and 2019, and so when you open up Aldridge Elementary School, the boundary work that was done, and those boundaries will come into play, and that map is included for you also. One of the things that we use in our projections are planning areas. We have your community and your school district divided into over 300 planning areas by land use, by the residential density, by natural features, and by man-made features. And all these planning areas are used to develop our, the, the planning situations that we have, and also lines up the number of students that would be in each of those planning areas. Little further shows just more in detail what each one of those planning areas might look like. It shows really the power of our GIS information as we've kind of zoomed in here on Orchard Hill Elementary, and you're able to see where students are located in relationship to the streets and subdivisions, and it illustrates how the planning areas are tied to the parcel. So these planning areas are very important and really are the, kind of the heart, if you will, of our process. We have a very sophisticated forecast model, which I will not go into because Rob could explain that more to you, but we use a lot of different data and a lot of different models to come up with the, the numbers that we do. And trust me, this has been very accurate for the most part. We have been running our projections in about 97% or better on five-year projections, and we'll show you how well we did with Cedar Falls projections here in a little bit. Wanted to just talk about past school enrollment. I think this is a very important document to look at, able to show you what's happened in past enrollment over the years. You can look at this in a lot of different ways. If we go down to 1617, you can see that you enrolled 453 kindergarteners this year, which was probably your biggest kindergarten class ever, and you're graduating or online to graduate about 371, so you can see the difference in the number of students that you would have gained just in that regard. And you can show also, I thought, an interesting, back in 2004, when this class started, they were 290 students, and they're projected to graduate at about 371, so you get a chance to see how those grade levels grow over the years and how the numbers move in that class. Your largest class in 2016-17, this current school year, is the fourth grade at 458, and your smallest class is your 11th grade at 358. And again, your graduating senior class will likely be smaller than the next incoming class. We also show past school enrollment change, if you will, and so we look at the yield rates by these grade levels and what happens from year to year. This gives you some good data. Your largest average class increase is from second to third grade, so if you looked at this data and went second to third, you'd go down there at 2015, 16, and you'd see that there's 18 students increase in, in that year of 2015 to 2016, and the three-year average is 16 students. So from grade second to third, you're picking up on average about 16 students a year, just in that grade level. Then if you go across, it shows you the number of students that you're gaining or losing. The largest average class increase was 16 in the three-year average, and the largest decrease was from ninth to 10th, which was a minus six. These next maps, there's a series of maps here that we use for planning purposes and for, in using our planning areas. This map here is what we call an in-migration map, and it basically shows you the students that were in first through 12th grade in 2016, that were, 2016-17 students who are in first through 12 that were not attending the district in 2015-16. So those kids that were enrolled this year over those that were involved in the school district last year, and what we see is there, at the bottom, there are 347 new students that were, that are attending in 1617. The out migration map is the next one, and this is students attending the district in 1516 who are in grades one, kindergarten through 11, that are not attending in 1617 as first through 12th graders. And there were 329 students no longer attending in 1617 for an overall district migration of a plus 18 students. Just some baseline demographic data that we just would share with you. You have about 5,300 students. The new residential permits are consistent, and new opportunities are going to be available as we talked earlier. The 2016 average household size is approximately 2.41 persons, and there's some census data also there that's related to, to the baseline demographic information. Other things to consider, building permits, new residential developments anticipated to be similar to a slight increase compared in recent years. Your average household size should likely increase with younger families relocating to your community, and younger-aged households have a greater propensity for school-aged Now, these next maps are, again, maps that are fairly technical and, and not that they're not hard to understand, but we really don't, from our perspective, of working with those, I think there are other, other diagrams and so on that'd be more helpful to you. But this census map, very, just technical information that is, is used in developing our yield rates. Children ages zero to four, in 2021, we're projecting where those numbers and densities will be. The densities are way by land group. The red has the greatest density, and actually, the white has the lowest, but blue would be also having a smaller amount of density also. And again, these are used to determine our yield rates. So this basically shows where children ages zero through four are residing in the district. This next document is the female ages 15 through 59 in 2021. And again, this, this data basically just helps us benchmark our projection model choices for student enrollment. And again, these are where female ages 15 to 59 in this next five-year period are located and the density of those. Planning area change map, some of the count differences in the planning areas depicts student movement at each planning area from 2012-13 to 2016-17. So this is a four-year time period of the student movement from different planning areas. The orange areas experienced an increase in student movement since 2012-13, and the green areas experienced a decrease since that time. White areas were no changes. Again, more technical information. This district information here depicts the student movement at each planning area from 12 to 16, and again, this has to do with the density of, of certain areas, and again, these are depicted by the colors, with the orange being where increases have taken place, green decreases, and white, there were no change. Again, technical information that we use in the planning areas. This next map is one that's what we call a heat map, and it shows the number of students in each planning area, where these students are located, and the density, if you will, of your students in certain areas. And the red is the greatest area where things are most dense, and gray areas where it's the least dense. And so as you think about your district and you look at your district and you see those areas, they should coincide where you have large numbers of families and students living in terms of the heat map. Want to talk about development discussion next. This graph shows three lines, if you will. It shows certificates of occupancy, enrollment change, and your census change. And I want to point out that the certificate of occupancy is different than building permits. And so building permits, there may be things, a number of building permits that might be taken out, but there's never anything that ever materializes from it. So this data here is when the certificate of occupancy is, is granted. What you see is a pretty flat line in terms of the green for the census change, a little uptick since the last census was taken. Your enrollment change has been very interesting, how it's gone up and down depending on various factors, and the certificate of occupancies has been on the decrease. I want to point out, if you look at certificates of occupancy in 2016-17, it says two, and I want to just tell you that that will be updated, and what we're projecting is that that will be around 100 when this is updated. So again, data that, that we use and that you can use in terms of what's going on, in terms of development trends, but based on what we know now, you're going to be closer to 100 units rather than the two that's listed there. Yield rates, again, what, what does this mean? This is basically the, the number of students that would be yielded by every 100 units of residential that you have in the district. I think the good news is, is you go back to 2000, 2001, you had a yield rate of about .307, and in 1617, you have a yield rate of .332. So that's good news. You're yielding more kids than you were back in those times, and really, it's continued to move up. Housing inventory increased by over 2,000 units during that time period in more households and subsequently more students. So you're yielding a few more kids. And as you know, the yield rate depends on the type of residential that it might be. Duplexes have a certain yield rate, single family, and so on. So talk about where will the growth occur? This is a graph that we've put together. The, the growth that we are projecting in the green is the current growth that's going on at this present time. The gold or yellow is what we're projecting in five-year growth period, and then the purple is 10 years out. Obviously, there's a lot of things that go on in terms of how your growth will occur, what are going to be the housing products that are going to be built, and there's a number of different things being built in your community right now. What will families be able to afford the available housing stock? I think that's an important factor. What's the economic outlook for Cedar Falls? And is it a positive picture that, that looks forward to some other growth in, commercially and so on in your district? The market and property owners' desire to build guides the timing of developments, and other properties not shown might develop while some shown might not develop at all. So what we see is kind of your new development is going to be on the west side of your district for the most part, and near Union Road and between West 12th and West 27th. And additionally, you'll have growth likely south of University Avenue and west of Hudson, particularly when Aldridge opens up. Typically what happens, and I think you're aware of that, you build a new school and they will come, and so I think you'll see some of that. But a positive outlook for things as we see it in that regard. There are a number of assumptions that we use in our development, and they're just things that we, we project that will help drive development or not drive development, and those assumptions are listed for you. I'm not going to cover all of those, but has to do with mortgage rates and foreclosure rates, what kind of home stock you have in terms of homes that are listed. There are 276 homes that are now listed with Realtor.com. I'm not sure what the date was on that, but you have a pretty good stock of homes in, in your community. And it has to do with fuel prices and interest rates and so on, so we are projecting that private and parochial school enrollments remain similar to past trends. You may have more information than we do on that, but that's certainly what we think will be the case. We look at enrollment projections. We want to look at the projection accuracy from 2014-15, and if you look.
Right, yes.
Yeah. So I just wanted to ask, because you gave the enrollment projections, so I was holding my tongue to, but it looks like you're moving on to the next section. So I'm just trying to reconcile in my mind the decrease in the number of certificate of occupancies that have been issued and the increase in the number of students. Is that meaning that the, of the existing stock of, of houses that are out there, there's more, the yield is increasing, using your terms, there's, there's more families occupying the same house rather than a lot of new housing being built?
Well, it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Combination of both.
But the, but the certificate of occupancy seemed to be a real steady, which, which just, I mean empirically, or maybe anecdotically, doesn't seem to make sense when we see these large housing developments west of Hudson that are, that are developing. It doesn't seem, anyway, it.
Well, your occupancy is, if, if you look at that graph, if you get the 100 placed in there, it, it's pretty much stays at the same level, so it's not decreasing as much it has from, you know, back in 2011, 12. But I think it's a combination of really of both of those things.
I think you're also predicting a .64% increase in the, in the number in the household, too.
Correct.
Might make up some of that.
Yeah, if that, and that would, that would show that the, that the mix of families that are occupying those houses is, is driving it. But it just seemed like a low, I mean, you, you just drive around town and you see all these houses going up and these new neighborhoods that spring up, and, and it seems like a low level of certificate of occupancies that are being, being issued. So just, just trying to put two and two together from what's going on.
When I look at slide 27, it says down at the bottom, what does that mean? It says housing inventory increased by over 2,000 units resulting in more households and subsequently more students. So I think 100 per year, but when you look at that over a trend line of multiple years, that adds up pretty quick.
Yep, yep.
Correct.
And then, and then just another fundamental question, because I get asked this, and I have my own opinion, but I'm interested to hear yours, is where are these families coming from? What is, what is, what is driving this growth? As you have gone out and talked to different people in the community and stuff, what are the, I mean, what, what are the, what's the economic engine, or what's drawing these people to Cedar Falls and their families?
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, we, we don't, we talk to developers, you know, we don't talk to families, as I say, but, you know, we talk to developers, and, and I think in your case here, it's a, it's a combination of just the kinds of jobs that you have. It might be, you know, the manufacturing that you have, the, some of the other jobs that you have, but from our perspective, I think you would probably have a better understanding of where these people are than, than we do. We say that in every community we, we go into, particularly in the metro. When we look at a school district like Waukegan that's growing 600, 700 kids, where are all these people working? Well, it might be easier to say that in Des Moines, but, but we don't particularly talk to the families, so I'm not sure. Maybe Andy and Doug or others might be able to answer some of that.
Okay. And then.
And you, and you might have some ideas on it, too.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, as you were polling and canvassing people, and then how do you account for open enrollment? We have, and you guys can correct me on my percent, but about 5% of our students are open net, on a net basis, are open enrolled in, so they're not actually physically living within the.
We don't, the open enrollment numbers are not a part of our projections.
So that total number of students that you have on your, on your, showing that, that does not include any open.
Well, that would have, that would have in your open enrollment.
There's, there's two different numbers here. So when you look at the enrollment numbers, those are going to be the number of students that are in our seats, so those will include open enrollment. They won't include preschool, but they include open enrollment students. There's some times in here it's listed that this is a certified enrollment number, this is the last day of school that we keep count of. So it just kind of denotes that at the bottom of the slide, but these would include open enrollment. And what was interesting, I didn't highlight this when Clay was going through it, but I think the differences from last year to this year and the number of outs and ends that we had, you'll see that it significantly went down. I think we're like at plus 18 from, and I don't remember what your terminology is, but the number of students that migrated out or migrated in. And I think that was due a lot to the open enrollment decisions that we made as a district because the year before it was close to 100 students more in, and I think a lot of those probably were open enrollment students, where this year we're having less open enrollment students in because we've closed that down and hampered that.
Okay. Okay.
And you altered your open enrollment policy. Are you still accepting open enrolled students?
Not at the elementary right now, except for continuous.
So when you, and I'll let you go into your projections there, not try to seethe or thunder on that. But so as you're looking at these projections going forward, you're not considering any open enrolled. You're looking at the district proper as it, as it's defined?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Want to just talk about projection accuracy since 2014-15. From a district perspective, we were right about 99%, 98.8. We projected 5362, and there was an actual 5298. Elementary and high school were even better than that. In our junior high enrollment, we were down a little bit with that, missed the projections because the enrollment growth experienced in those grades significantly changed from what it typically was in the past year. So from an accuracy standpoint, we were very accurate on a five-year period. We don't, when we look at 10-year projections, it's a lot harder to look out that far. But that was the accuracy for the five-year enrollments. Next just shows the past, current, and future enrollment in a graph procedure, if you will. You can see the growth that's taken place since 2000, 2001, and what we're projecting in 2020, 627. What's it mean, the enrollment growth, the increases anticipated coincide with the development activity that you have going on in the community? And your new elementary school coming online in 1819 will alleviate elementary capacity concerns with the enrollment increase. So again, an exciting time in Cedar Falls when you're growing, we think, somewhere around 100 students a year. This is the elementary enrollment projections. Just kind of to show you this graph and explain it a little bit to you. It has the elementaries down the left-hand side, the capacities, and then the enrollment numbers. And we use the reside numbers, which are the ones in the middle of the projections. And it goes on to just to show you kind of what's going on in 2000, next year, 2017, 18. You can see that you continue to be in a situation where at Lincoln Elementary, you're over capacity, Southdale over capacity. And but when your new elementary comes online in 1819, that does take care of some of your capacity issues. And if you look at in 1920, with your enrollment capacities where you do hit kind of the capacity levels, the current capacities of the buildings, you can see that they're not going over them by much. In fact, I think Hanson goes over for a couple years and then comes back into the good. But so you can see that those are the schools that, that you're going to experience some issues with in terms of your enrollment. Now, in 1819, when the new school comes online, then that does help. One of the things that we will recommend and talk maybe a little bit about is there may be a way to balance some of that enrollment. Once your new school's built or prior to that, whether you would consider or think about making a small adjustment to your boundaries. And that might be able to alleviate some of the issues that you have with Hanson and with, let's see, what would be the other, yeah, with Hanson and North Cedar. So, not North Cedar, but Cedar Heights. So that might be something to think about, a balance. You could balance your enrollments a little bit better over the long term with when you bring your new school online by making some possible adjustments in your, in your enrollment boundaries. And as being a part of that project, I remember the discussions that we had about, particularly about Hanson and Cedar Heights in terms of moving more students out of those districts, elementary districts, which would alleviated some of that problem. But that's something that you might be able to talk about at another time. So that kind of shows you the elementary, you're going to be in pretty good shape, certainly in better shape when your new elementary comes online. As far as your junior highs, again, we talked about Pete in 2024, 25, being at an issue. And then your high school certainly in 1920. So you want to be thinking about what you're going to do and how you're going to address those things, you know, a couple of years, two to three years ahead of time, so that you can meet your responsibilities in terms of having capacity levels that are acceptable.
What is capacity at homes now?
Right now, it says 1750, but we currently have, you know, close to 600 students in both junior highs. And that feels tight with the number of students. So we know there's some room there, but not a lot of room there. So that's going to be the challenge as we look to the future.
And again, these projections that you've shown, and these capacity constraints that you've shown, do not include any open enrolled students, right?
No. Nope. These are the reside students, the ones that are residing within that attendance boundary.
That live in that district, elementary boundary line.
Which is nice, because it goes by who is living in, within that region. So it allows us to be able to kind of hand-target and hand-pick with those students and where they're at, and potentially where they could go, depending on balancing, especially at the elementary level.
Right.
And again, these projections are a little bit lower than what we would have seen before. Not significant, but a little bit lower in terms of the number of students that you have. So next steps, let's just talk about some of the key considerations. First of all, I talked to you earlier, but new developments will likely continue mostly on the west side of your community, near Union Road and between West 12th and West 27th. Additional opportunities are likely to be south of University Avenue and west of Hudson, if and when, and it's not if anymore, it's when Aldridge Elementary Facility opens in 1819, which is exciting. Building permit activities should remain similar to the last couple of years, about 100 units annually, with the potential for it to be greater. Future kindergarten classes, we project are going to exceed 450 students over the next five years. Economic conditions, development activity, pre-K trends and census trends for children zero to four and women are variables to monitor. And we certainly do that for how well these projections will become reality. And there are some pressing capacity concerns at the elementary level as well as at the high school level, with junior high having capacity challenges beyond 24, 25. Next steps then, district administration, the board could further study the enrollment and development information in this presentation to determine if any minor changes might be needed for elementary attendance areas when Aldridge Elementary comes online in 1819. Administration, continue to examine building utilization opportunities that you might have to improve any student experiences that you have, and just to continue to make decisions and communicate that information to your community. Certainly, enrollment plays a big part in, in the development of your school and your budget and all the things that you do. And so we recommend that you continue to do enrollment reports. We recommend that you do them on an annual basis, but certainly as frequently as you can, so that you can make the best decisions that you can. We also, I think we provided Dr. Patty grade level numbers by grade level. And so that also can help you in the staffing process. We can project with pretty good accuracy how many kids you're going to have in third, fourth, fifth, and all these grade levels. And certainly, if you can get your staff lined up in a good situation, you're able to utilize your dollars in the best way that you can. So with that, I'll be quiet, answer any questions that you might have, try to. And anything that I can't answer, Rob certainly can, and we'll make sure we get those answers for you. But overall, again, the three takeaways as you're growing, that's exciting. You've got a lot of development activity that's taking place and could continue to take place based on a number of factors. Still, understanding that you have some capacity challenges that you're going to have to, to address. But with your new elementary, that's exciting, and that's the first step. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board?
Back earlier in the presentation, I think, I don't know, way back, you had boundary lines recommended for, I think, 1819? It was like slide number 18 or something.
As a consideration?
Is that what you would, what you're recommending based on the projections? Or is that something we, is that something we can use sort of as guidelines?
You could possibly do some readjustment of your boundary, boundary lines prior to opening your school, your new elementary in 1819, that could alleviate some of the overcrowding that you have at Hanson and Cedar Heights.
And I know we were talking, we have talked about looking at boundary lines in another year or so.
Yes. This, in fact, probably later this year, after we get a chance to kind of dissect some of the numbers. But the two maps that...
Which number one was it?
Number nine was the first one. And that is the current elementary map with our current six attendance zones, boundaries. Then the next map on page number 10 is the 2018-19 elementary map that was approved, oh, about 14, 15 months ago by the board. So that includes Aldridge Elementary, which will be in the red within that map to be able to show what that attendance zone will be in those families' neighborhoods going to that new elementary.
Right. I know it's such an emotional time for families if they're on that line. And I just thought it's nice to know ahead of time that we're going to have to be making some of those decisions.
Yes. And that'll be part of our communication plan as well, because most of those families know that they're moving towards the new elementary in 1819. But our plan is to be able to send out letters to them as well upcoming late spring, early summer, to make sure that's kind of a year in advance to say, again, here's the plan and here's the process.
Thank you.
I mean, my question dovetails that a little bit, you know, not knowing at this point if we're going to go with a three-section or four-section building for certain, and knowing how much can change in a year and a half. I mean, I guess I'm nervous to send letters out late spring, early summer, knowing we're still a year, you know, almost over a year out from that elementary opening. So I would like to try and push that. I mean, I understand everyone would like to know that, but we don't want to have to go back and change it. So how far can we push that till we have to make a determination?
You know, that's one of those, it's a great question. But typically, what we do is we'll send out the letter that says, as of now, with the current boundaries, this would be the plan. It's always subject to change depending on different data, demographic information, just as we do with our open enrollment students in the district. We always send out letters that always say, here's your current zone of attendance. However, this could change at any time depending on enrollment. So we'd make that open and make that clear that as of now, point in time, this is where it would be at. Because I think we have all agreed that we want to make sure that this is a little bit more fluid and it's not a one-time, every 10-years event. It can happen more fluidly and more frequently, because we have great schools across our district. But it shouldn't be based on just where you live at and what your zone is.
I know just once we send a letter, you know, people seem to get that in their head. And if they get another letter, it's more of an issue. So I'd rather have fewer letters going out and just have that decision-making be pushed.
RSP and associates is not advocating that you change your boundary lines. We're just saying that as you look at the capacity issues that you have, there is an opportunity potentially for you to look at those, which might yield itself better in the long run for you. That's a community issue and certainly an issue for the board.
And the time maybe to do that is before the new elementary opens, so we don't have to do it twice? If we have enough information there to tweak it then? And then...
I think we need to be able to analyze the data a little bit more, because it could be more than, you know, there could be a tweak here, there could be a tweak there, but it could affect multiple buildings. So you want to make sure you just don't make one change for the sake of one attendance zone, where there could be multiple zones that could be affected residually. So I think we just want to spend time. We did ask, and it was really good information to have, what are the projections per grade level, so we can look out into the future to say, how many kindergartens are projected to potentially be in Southdale, Aldridge, three to four to five years from now? And that helps us plan accordingly as well. So that's data we really need to dig into. And we will certainly bring some kind of recommendations back to the board. But we want to look at that before we even say what would be best and what would be most prudent.
Is it possible at that time to have a listing of the socioeconomic components of each building and how that's changing with these new boundaries? I mean, I know we had that at one point for free and reduced lunch. I mean, we looked at what free and reduced lunch was for each building and how that was changing with the opening of the new elementary. And I think that's something I'd like us to consider as best we can.
That'd be a request from the district, and we can provide lots of different reports for you.
Yep. Yeah. And we have that on our website now, just with our current attendance zones with each of our buildings. So that's something that's not that difficult to put together.
If we can see how that is impacted with the new boundaries, I think that's important. If we can try and have that be consistent across buildings as best we can, it'd be nice to have that be a consistency, more so than having high free and reduced lunch buildings and low free and reduced lunch buildings.
Right. And when we went through that with our committee about a year and a half ago, that wasn't one of the criteria that the board set out when we looked at the boundaries. That was, I think we had about five different criteria that the board put together that they voted on that said, here, what we really want to focus on for our attendance zones and intense boundaries with the least amount of impact on families, making sure that we keep our neighborhoods together. And just off the top of my head, I can't list the other three or four. But that wasn't one of the main criterias at the time. So that would be a change of course from what we looked at from that committee standpoint.
Any other questions or conversation?
I don't know if we need to review, if you need to review this, but when we talk about enroll, open enrollment and closing, there are still state laws in place that require us to have some open enrollment.
Yes. The continuous open enrollment is still bound by code. That's something we can't change or adapt. Also, students that are currently open enrolled into our district, we have to treat them like they are students that are resident students. So those students will continue within their zone, or attendance in our district. The caveat to that is we have a little bit more flexibility on where those students may attend. And that goes back to sending out the letters, because we send those out to make sure that everybody understands that currently your attendance building is X, but that can be changed annually.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we appreciate the opportunity to serve your district. We look forward to continually providing the information you need. And again, good luck with your new building and exciting times in Cedar Falls.
Thank you, Clay. Drive safe.
All right. Moving on to item G, approve the plan specifications and set a public hearing for the summer 2017 roofing projects.
And I would like to introduce Daryl Smith from TerraCon. Daryl is the engineer. Has been a long time working with the district for engineering for roofing and missionary wall projects. And I'll turn it over to Daryl.
Hello, everyone. We'll go through the roofing project and... This is Hanson. I don't know if we...
You need to back, Janelle, can you back up a slide?
There we go. There we go. You can barely see it's the three roofs are highlighted in red there in the south end. JK and L, these roofs are 33 years old, and it's time for them to have a little bit update for them. Put plans and specs together to increase insulation value to the current code value, and then also put on a 90 bill fully adhered EPDM sheet that will give the district a 30-year warranty. Here's the roof plan. It's on the roof plans and specs. There's existing structural slope on there, which helps, so we don't have to put any tapered insulation. So it'll all be basically flat insulation. A lot of units and curbs up there to worry about. Nothing, nothing our roofing contractor can handle. And we have some estimated budget costs, construction costs for the roofing project. Right now, we're at about $175,000. Here's the timeline. We'll have a bid opening February 7. And then Doug will be back here the following Monday for hopefully awarding the contract. And then construction will be during the summertime as usual. And then construction will be during the summertime as usual. Also during this time, we've got some exterior masonry wall repairs. It's basically on the seventy-three and eighty-four additions. There's going to be, those are, that's a pretty low wall. Tuck pointing, repointing that needs to be done, a lot of bricks that have cracked and things like that. And then there'll be some control joints in the masonry walls that'll be redone as they're also showing signs of stress. And after that, we will apply a water, water repellent coating on all the brick masonry to, to help it for future years. And I got budget costs for that for around sixty thousand dollars for doing that work. And that timeline's pretty much the same as the one for the roofs, too.
And I will note to the board that there is no public hearing required for the masonry wall project, because it's less than the statutory requirements by the Code of Iowa for setting a public hearing. But it is high enough that it needs to come to the Board of Education for the project approval.
If anyone has any questions, I'm open to them.
This is part of our, our ten-year plan as well for our PEPAL. This is something that, we have a roof repair cycle built into that as an overall cost, and, and this is something that we know on an annual basis, we continuously have to do. Tuck pointing is just our preventive maintenance to make sure that we don't have significant issues down the road, and we appreciate all the work, because I know we've had quite a few tuck pointing projects that have been ongoing for the last multiple years, so...
And we've probably got a couple more as, as budget allows, so...
Yes, we will, more than likely. So it's always good to have the brick and good repair.
And I would remind the board that this is the last project with, of the last ten-year roof plan that was presented to the board ten or eleven years ago. And we have hired Darrell's firm to come in and review all our roofs. And they will be presenting a, another ten-year plan to the board for roof, continued roof repairs and upgrade, and that'll be coming sometime, hopefully between now and the end of the school year. So you can look at that, and that'll plug right into our ten-year master plan for the renewed PEPAL.
Do I have a motion to approve instead of hearing, public hearing?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications, and form the contract and set January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM, as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the two thousand seventeen summer roofing project.
Thank you, Susie. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item H on the agenda, approve the plans, specifications, that said, set a public hearing for Cedar Heights, and for the Cedar Heights entrance project. Doug?
I would like to introduce Mr. Dan Chandler from Structure Architects, who will walk, who will walk us through the project. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. So could we go to, yes, there we go. Thank you. So basically what we're doing here at Cedar Heights is creating a secure vestibule. To accomplish that, we need to remove the two existing sets of doors and frames that enter into the building and replace them with new aluminum, so that we can get all the electronics, strikes, and the like into it. So, and also add the camera, the iPhone push button to announce themselves. So coming into the vestibule, we've created an opening in the east wall of the vestibule to come into the existing office reception area. There was an existing wall running from, if you see where this chair is on the north side, that wall, if you were to run that straight south, that's where the existing wall used to be in that area. So to be able to create the reception desk areas, work areas, seating area, and circulation through that space, we needed to take that wall out, move the wall back to the next mullion. That also inclu, that included then replacing or relocating the fire alarm panel, and I'll have Mike Broke talk about that in a moment. So then, once you're into the office area lobby, then you can then go back out into the corridor like we have in all of the rest of the schools. So that creates a smaller space for the principal. We created a instructor-coach room, which used to be the workroom space. The area then to the east of that became the conference room. There was quite a bit of cabinetry taken out of that room to make it work for that function along the east walls. And then we infilled a couple of openings there, a window into the sick bay from the conference, and from the conference into the nurses' area, there used to be a door there at that, at that location. We're also infilling the door on the south side of the office area, toothing it in so it looks like it was never, never there. And so that kind of gives you a broad, quick overview of that part of the project. So, Mike?
Mechanical, electrical, everything.
Sure. If you can go back to the floor plan again, give me some point of reference. No, that's okay. All right. Dan usually doesn't let me speak at these, so I was like, two for, two for two here. In the remodeled area, the sprinkler system, it's just nothing more than just rearranging sprinkler heads and piping, so that, that piece of it is fairly straightforward. Onto the plumbing, we are adding a washer and dryer for that facility, and that's just off to the right of the plan. If you see that existing toilet room, there's a, a storage room that that's going to reside in. And so that's going to be the most economical location for that. So that's included in the plans on that. On the mechanical side, the heat pumps are currently out in that existing hallway, and they're going to stay as is. And we're essentially going to just rearrange some of the ductwork based on the new walls that are being constructed, and the diffusers are going to be replaced with new. So again, that's fairly straightforward, too. Onto the electrical piece. We're adding some data, data drops and some power based on the new, new layouts. Dan mentioned that the existing fire alarm panel, which is currently located in the principal's office, that's actually going to get moved out into the hallway. What's that number, Dan? Is that...
One oh four B. It's on the south side of the little hallway, H one oh one. So we, we also had to, because of the thickness of the panel, we had to take that wall out to come back with six-inch studs to make it fit.
Yep. So that's going to be relocated to that wall. And there's also, because of the, the doorway into that vestibule going into the main office, there's a, it's called a fire enunciator, and that has to be relocated as well, so it'll have to get scooched down past the door on that. We are, like Dan said, we are adding a panic button, door access onto those, onto those doors, similar to what's occurring in the other facilities. So we're continuing tho, those standards. What else? I think that's, yes, all the lights are going to be LED with daylight harvesting and occupancy sensors for the new energy code. So that's being implemented. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Mike. So moving on to the next, you can see the budget. So demolition costs, new work, mechanical, electrical, construction total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred. Fees, a contingency, and total projected costs at this point, so... Any questions?
This was part of our previous ten-year plan that we had in place. We were looking at this project last summer. We delayed it. And again, it's trying to bring up that entryway, that safety and security up to the other standards that we have. And now what will be all buildings besides the high school, once the construction of the new elementary and the remodel at Orchard Hill and North Cedar occurs.
Correct.
Correct. That'll be this summer?
Yes, similar to what we did at Lincoln two summers ago.
So not to put you on the spot, Dan, but so architectural fees exceed ten percent of the total cost of the project? The elementaries are, what, about seven, eight percent?
Seven, I believe.
Is there a reason why these architectural fees are, as a percentage of the total cost of the project, substantially higher?
Smaller projects takes, take as much or more time than big projects. And our, our standard fee typically works out to be hourly on a project this size. There's just that much more work involved. We still have to go through all of the same, same things we have to do for the bigger projects.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a motion to approve and set a public hearing for the two thousand seventeen roof, oh, excuse me, wrong agenda, for the Cedar Heights entry project, entrance project?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications, and form of contract as set January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock PM, as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the two thousand seventeen Cedar Heights entrance project.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Moving on to the approval of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year audit. I think we're going to tag-team this, if I understand this, this evening?
Yes, it's always an exciting time of year when we can have the audit, an update, and the findings from the past fiscal year. So we, we are very happy to have Monica here, and I know Mr. Neffker will be presenting some of the, the findings as well. So thank you very much.
So this is what it looks like on this side. So I want to thank Monica, who's with us from the auditing firm, and we're going to kind of walk through the audit for this year. And if you want to pull it up on a, on a, we can start with this, I'll let Monica take us start off.
Okay. First, I want to say this, these are your financial statements, and I am issuing an opinion on them. Our responsibility is to express those opinions on your financial statements in accordance with, in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We base it on our audit, which is conducted in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards and the standards of government auditing standards for federal programs.
Okay, so you've probably seen different pie charts from me before. These are a little bit different, because they talk about all funds, they talk about specific proprietary, or not proprietary funds, and we'll kind of work through that as we go through it. But you can see for the two thousand sixteen school year, this is a pie graph showing where all the revenue came from. This would be all funds, whether it's the general fund, or the food service fund, or the trust accounts, pretty much everything. You can see all the dollars where they've come in and where they broke down. And you can see that roughly one-third of the total revenue for the district for last school year was from property taxes. And again, roughly another one-third was from some sort of estate grant. And so that can kind of give you an idea where the majority of the dollars are coming from. This chart makes an attempt to try and show you over the last few years where the dollars have come from as a percentage. So you can see that one in particular that I would point out would be the property tax vertical bar that has, as far as total dollars coming into the district, that has reduced a little bit. You'll also notice that our unrestricted, or excuse me, our estate grants has gone up in proportion to that. It kind of gives you an idea. The red bar, the very first one, you'll notice that that slowly decreases over the three fiscal years. A lot of that has to do with River Hills Consortium. As you'll recall, we, we're sort of transitioning that from being a part of the general fund out of, out into that, its own trust and agency account, and so that's why you'll see that, that dip as we've walked through the last three years. Expenditures for last year, there you can see, there's the pie graph showing all the different breakdowns, and these pretty much follow the function of expense coding that were required to follow by the Department of Education. And you can see almost sixty percent of every dollars, every dollar that we spend in a school district is directly tied to instruction in some way, shape, or form. And you can see the various different pieces of that pie graph as we go through it. And then historically, you can see the, the difference over the last three years, again, in a total dollars perspective, the instruction portion of our dollars spent, and that's primarily what we're here for, obviously. And you can see that that's where the, the district is putting the majority of its dollars. Now, we'll try to, I tried to take Monica's great work and put it, that is on an eleven-by-seventeen piece of paper and shrink it down into one graph. But basically what this is trying to show, this is a condensed statement of our net position at the end of the last three school years. And you can see how our net position, we, we slipped a little over a hundred thousand dollars in fiscal sixteen from fiscal fifteen, and that's basically done by total assets minus the liabilities and the outflows. And so that kind of gives you an idea where, where we've been over the last three years. And there, graphically, that maybe is a little bit better picture of showing how the district has performed. Balance sheet, you can see, this is all, this is just governmental funds. And there, there's, there's no food service or business activities in this information. And what we're showing is, we're showing what are, what we have to classify as the major funds within the school district. Debt service is all zeros, but it is considered a major fund because of the dollars that we flow through that for making our debt service payments. And so you can see where, where we're at as far as total assets and total liabilities, and then total fund balance for each three, for the major funds, and the total would be on the far right. There we go. Whoop, whoop, whoa. I got ahead of myself. And there's the net position for the proprietary fund of the food service program, basically. And then you can see our total assets and liabilities and fund balances for that for, for the last school year. Total capital assets, this is always something that's interesting, so that the board is aware of where we're at. You can see that at the end of the two thousand sixteen, we had total governmental capital assets of a little over a hundred and ten million. And then with the food service program is just under eight hundred thousand, so we have a grand total of a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and ninety-five dollars in, in assets, and those are net of depreciation, correct?
Not on this statement.
Not on this statement, okay.
Not on that side.
That's why she's alone. Here's our debt schedule, and you can see not only the, the debt that we have for our revenue bonds, also other liabilities that we have for compensated absences, and of course, those are the dollars that we owe out for salaries and benefits and that sort of thing at the end of the fiscal year, but as well as our OPEB liability and our pension liability. So that you can see where, where our net pension liability is for the business activities in the bottom of this, of the graph as well. It kind of gives you an idea of where the district sits for a long-term debt total and what is due within the, the next twelve months.
So just a quick, so our, our debt increased by three million between fifteen and sixteen. Bonds went down, as we pay, it's a pension. What caused the volatility in the, because that's equation-based? So what caused the volatility in the, in the calculation for that? Because you had the same people with the same accrual tables.
Last year was the first year, so there were certain parts of the equation that were not put into the beginning balance, because we would have had to go back an extra year prior to that. So there were things that flowed through this year that probably, in effect, would... in effect, would have been the prior year. But because the state, this was going to be the first year that they were showing it last year, they didn't do certain calculations, which did come into play this year. So it should be not, it shouldn't be as volatile in the future.
What was the major variable? Because you, I mean, you have number of people, you have accrual rate, you have expected return, and you have discount rate.
There were some of the inflows and outflows that were, that are calculated. And it's a, it's a pretty, it's a three or four-page calculation when we do that. The very first year, they did not go back and do one of them. And I can't, off the top of my head, tell you exactly which one that is. But it was, it had to do with the, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but it had to do with one of those calculations. They said, for the first year, we're just going to start here. Then after that, then you get both the beginning and ending changes. And so it won't be as volatile.
Won't be volatile going forward. And just to, just as a reminder, that number, that would be if Ipers collapsed. In the rare case that Ipers collapsed, would that ever become a liability, a true liability? But because of the accounting standards, we've been asked to put that on our balance sheet as a liability. But it's really only a very, very extreme case where Ipers would
You really weren't asked.
Defunct.
You weren't asked.
Oh, yes, I know, I know. We were told, we were told, according to the rules, we had to stick it on our, stick it as a liability.
It would be OPEB.
Right. But it's, it really would only be evoked in the case of this very, very extreme case that Ipers would go belly up.
And to give you another example, there were two, I believe, two or three school districts across the state that ceased to function as of June 30. Well, they would have had a liability, but that was absorbed then by, you know, the districts where those, as those district, former district divided up. So it would be an extremely rare case that that liability would be sitting on the shoulders of residents of the school district.
So although it's a volatile number, which should stabilize going forward, as far as that big number, as far as, in a practical standpoint for our district, it's not a weight of debt that's sitting on our shoulders that we necessarily really have to be concerned with at this point. Okay.
And it's, all, all school districts across the state are going to show it.
Granted, yep.
And it's, it's just going to be something that you have to live with. And I have to live with.
No.
And I would say that, well, when we received the information last year, which was the first year, the folks at Ipers were really kind of scrambling. When you think about what they have to do, the number of, number of public agencies that their employees have improved, and they have to take that total amount, break that all down, and divvy that out by school district. They were scrambling quite a bit last year in order to get us that data. It wasn't exactly, I won't say it was late, but it wasn't as prompt as we would have liked to have seen.
And they did fine-tune several of their footnotes and several of their calculations, you know, this year, whereas it was the first year last year. And so they were finding new things this year that maybe should have been there last year.
Okay, thanks.
One of the other things that's tied with debt, now this would be back to the, our bond debt, is that we have to be able to report to our bondholders what our debt service coverage ratio is for our revenue bonds. And you'll see that as of the end of fiscal 2016, our coverage rate was just under 1.60. According to our official statement that we issued when we sold both our 2011 and 2013 bonds, we guaranteed that we would have a coverage ratio of at least 1.2. And with our refinancing of the bonds that we just did back here in November, we also guaranteed that that would be at 1.2 as well. So you can see that the information on the screen is, before we did the refinancing, and we were at 1, we'll be at 1.67 next year. And with refinancing, we'll probably be greater than 1.7. So we're certainly meeting that obligation as far as having appropriate debt service coverage for our revenue bonds.
Is that taking in consideration the bonds that we are going to issue?
No, these are, these are the revenue bonds, not the general obligation bonds.
Gotcha.
We don't have to worry about debt service coverage ratio for that because that's paid for by the faith and credit of the property tax holders of the school district, not the sales tax revenue.
Gotcha.
And the other thing that we want to talk about, this is new in the audit this year, is we have to start reporting on our component unit. And our component unit, of course, is the Cedar Falls Community Schools Foundation. And so you can see that what their net position was one year ago, their total income, of course, the big income would be the Christiansen Grant transfer from the district to, to the foundation, and then their expenses. So you can see the foundation's net position was $2.18 million as of June 30. And you'll start seeing that information on a annual basis.
So do we have a fiduciary responsibility as a school district to the foundation?
We, it is viewed that because they're a component unit and their sole purpose is to support the school district, we need to report their financials. And it's, and it's very, very, what's the word I want to use, concise reporting.
They have, they have a fiduciary responsibility to you. That's why we think that their, it's dollar amount and other, other specific items, we determined that they should be reported on your financial statements.
So do you, do you do an audit on them as well, then?
No. And we specifically say that we do not. But they're included, it's, you know, it's just a, they're included in the supplemental information. And then it's just a column on your state entity-wide financial statements.
We have been reporting on the foundation's financials with a certified annual report for quite a number of years now. And so now it's just taking that next step to have it on the audit. It's really basically just one column on one report.
The statement of activity and the statement of position is just one column.
Yep.
And I was just going to mention, too, he had talked about the fact that the fixed assets were about $110, $111 million. The depreciation on that was about, I just lost it. It's about $34,000 net. So your net, net is about $76 million is the net after depreciation on the fixed assets.
And of course, this is what we all wait for in the business office every year, is the report from Monica after they get done going through everything. I will have to say that it really is a pleasure working with Monica's team when they come do the audits. We bounce a lot of stuff off of them throughout the course of the school year, and they graciously do that on our behalf. We've been pestering Monica a little bit with our upcoming GO bond sale that's going to take place next one, getting ready for the official statement, some other information for that. And they've just been outstanding to work with. But I'll let her go through the summary of the summary report.
Basically, I just want to tell you that unmodified opinions were issued on the financial statements. The audit did not disclose any significant deficiencies in internal control over the financial reporting or over the noncompliance, which is material to the financial statements. And the audit did not disclose any significant deficiencies over, over major programs. And an unmodified opinion was issued on compliance with requirements of each major program. The major program consisted of the child nutrition cluster, and Cedar Falls Community School did qualify as a low-risk auditee. Again, there were the findings, there were none. And lastly, the other findings related to the required statutory reporting, which is from the state of Iowa. The only thing, one of the things there, the certified budget, the overall authorized amended budget for the year ended June 30 was not exceeded. However, expenditures did exceed the instructional function by about $45,000, which was about 0.12%. So it was small. The other findings were just, they're required to do. The only other one I want to touch on is the activity fund. Public purpose has been determined, it goes back to an attorney general's opinion dated April 25 of '79. It came out with new guidance March 23 of '16. And I know the district is working on that and will probably come forward with some policy adjustments shortly.
Yeah, you will. Obviously, having a revised guidance come to us in March gave us very little time to make any adjustments before the end of the school year. We have, I do have a draft of a revision to our current board policy with the, with the activity fund and what would be considered an appropriate public purpose. We're working with the legal team on that. And we'll be bringing that to the audit committee sometime here this spring for their review, and eventually to take that to board for your approval. And with that, I think that's it. Again, I want to thank Monica and her team at Carnegie Alexander. And I would be completely remiss without thanking my team in the business office. They're the people that are doing the vast majority of the work, especially when Monica and her team are asking questions. And I have to say thank you to them because they allow me to work here sometimes. And we would entertain any other questions that the board might have on the audit.
Monica, it's always been a pleasure to have you here. And I've always heard good things about your team and your relationship that you have with the district. And I know, Doug, that your team works well with the auditors when they come. And it is time-consuming. And you all do a wonderful job and make it easy for us to understand and walk through it. So thank you for being a part of the checks and balances for us. So we appreciate that. Any other questions that might, the board might have? Do I have a motion to approve the audit?
I move to accept the 2015-16 school year audit as presented.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item J on the agenda, approval of the school bus bids. Doug, you're up again.
I think I'm wired up here. If you'll go into your board pack, you'll, you can see the review of the bus bids. We're requesting two school buses to purchase, two school buses for next school year. We'll do the wheelchair bus first because that's the simple one. We continue to have a need for additional, what I would call wheelchair buses, so we can use for students that have handicaps, to be able to transfer them to and from school. We currently have three of these larger vehicles, and we have, finding that we need a fourth one. And so we requested bids for that. Two bids were received, and our recommendation is to accept the bid from school bus sales with the front air ride at $102,044. On the transit bus, that's a little bit different. Again, we requested bids for that. This goes back to, if the board will remember, in November, when we made the decision to purchase the two leased buses. We were trading a 84-passenger for a 65. And this, now we're doing the reverse. We're trading a 65 for an 84. Our recommendation is to accept the bid from school bus sales of Waterloo, Iowa at $96,989. Now, I do realize that that's approximately $1,500 more than the low quote. The reasons behind our recommendation are two-pronged. One is the bus from school bus sales does have a front air ride on the bus. The blue, the Thomas unit does not. And the other is the cost difference associated with dealer proximity for warranty and service work, and overall cost of ownership due to some proprietary, proprietary parts on the Thomas bus that are not necessarily with the Bluebird from school bus sales. Now, I will say that both buses are good buses. We have recently bought 284-passenger Thomas buses a couple of years ago. But the price difference at that time was in the neighborhood of $20,000 because of the value that they gave us for the trade-ins versus what Bluebird would not give us for that. We would accept either one, but our recommendation would be to accept the quote from school of sales.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Do I have any questions? Yes, Doug.
Do we have any, do we get any discount or advantage if we buy both from the same company?
No.
Okay.
And the bids are set up that way intentionally, that they, everything's opened at the same time. But they know that, there's no discounts for buying both from the same dealer.
Thanks.
Good question. Yeah.
So we get, on a funding standpoint, when we, from an instructional standpoint, we get special funds if we have, for special needs. I assume we don't get any?
With both of these buses, they would be paid for out of the physical plant and equipment levy. It gets
So there's no special consideration there from a funding standpoint to help meet the needs of those students, you know, with special needs, just like we do on an instructional basis?
It's very, very complex when it comes to being able to purchase a bus like this out of special education funds. And basically, what we would have to do is we'd have to dedicate that that bus be only a special needs bus and never be used for any sort of a regular education purpose or transport regular or non-special education students. And I think that limits us way too much because I can tell you that with our, the three routes that we are running now, they are a combination of special needs and non-special needs kids on all three of those buses. And the two mini buses that we have that are also hauling students to and from school, those are more primarily special needs kids in those buses. But I would not recommend, if we ever needed another one, using special ed dollars for that because it's a very complex arrangement. And it just so limits our flexibility as what we can do with those vehicles if we use those special ed dollars.
I think the rationale behind that is, one of the requirements and expectations of a school district is to get their children to school. So regardless if they have special needs or don't have special needs, it comes out of that same fund, OPEB. That's why it's so challenging and difficult to overcome that with an Iowa code.
Thank you. Good question. Bless you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the bus bid? Do I have a motion to approve the bus bid?
So move.
For which?
Thank
Both.
Both Bluebirds?
Both Bluebirds.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Second, Susan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item K on the agenda, approval of the SBRC Special Education Administrative Cost Request for Woodward Granger.
Okay, and that would be me again. This is the last of the three consortium groups that we're associated with. We do have one student that is attending Grandwood down at the Woodward Granger system in their school district. And we're asking for special ed administrative cost expense in the amount of $3,880.51. This would be for the 2017-18 school year.
All right. Do we have any, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that the board of the directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $3,880.51. The special education administrative costs associated with Grandwood Woodward Granger Consortium Program for the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of different items. January 11, we do have our Administrative Council Board Retreat. That starts at 9:30 a.m. January 23 is our next board meeting, and we'll have information report on some of our learning-based activities. January 30, just a reminder, at noon, we have a new elementary school bids acceptance meeting that'll be held here at City Hall. As Julie said earlier, it is the end of the semester, and certainly it's an active time. But as we look to the future, and as we talked about last board meeting, we're excited certainly about the CAPS program starting up too in the second semester. So a lot of neat and exciting opportunities and occurrences happening across the district, which we're really excited about.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Patty? Okay, moving on to questions, comments, and concerns from the board.
I know it's still early, but the foundation will be celebrating 10 years. And we are having Celebration for Education on February 25. It'll be from 6:30 to 9:30. The Brazilian Twins will be performing. Dr. Patty will be speaking briefly. And we are going to have a live cake auction. It'll be a lot of fun. So put on your helmet.
I thought you were going to say he was going to be part of the entertainment.
He might be. The Brazilian Twins will be performing. Dr. Patty will be speaking briefly, and we are going to have a live cake auction. It'll be a lot of fun.
I thought you were going to say he was going to be part of the entertainment. Brazilian Twins and Dr. Patty.
But she included briefly.
Briefly. Briefly. I threw the briefly part in there. Anyway, be sure and watch because, well, it's going to be $25 a person.
Where's that at?
Hilton Garden.
Hilton Garden, at what time?
6:30 to 9:30.
So will information be coming?
Yes.
You've seen it on Facebook.
We have seen it.
You have seen it tweeted.
Okay.
You have all seen those things.
Yeah.
You should be.
So anyway, we'll be talking about that continually from now till then.
Okay.
So on your calendars.
Also, on the 24th of January, I sent it out this weekend, the day on the Hill. I know Doug Shaw sent me an email that he would like to go. I would like to attend that also. And if there are others that would like to go, we could probably ride together going down there. So just maybe communicate with me, and I'll get that information to Andy. He's not able to go, but I still think it's valuable that we go down and visit with our legislators, if you'd like to go.
Do you remember what the time window was for that? I got the email you sent, and I didn't get a...
You know, I don't, I don't write offhand, Doug, but I'll send it, I'll send it out to everybody on the Iowa School Board Association's website. It's on there, the day on the Hill.
Okay.
I might comment on a happy report. Just before Christmas, there was sort of an unknown saxophonist that presented at Gallagher Bludorn for about a two-and-a-half-hour performance, Kenny G. And he commented from the front that one of the people in his band, he and I, they had been in the same group since fourth grade. And all six of these outstanding performers were public school graduates. And he just put a great plug in for public schools. And the very next day, we had Mr. Ramsey presented at the Women's Club with about seven, with about 40 of his students, and for a tremendous compliment to our Fine Arts Department, as well as, I don't know if there's any Kenny Gs among them, but you never know.
Thank you, Jim. The day on the Hill is, starts at 9:00 and is over at 4:30.
And the date again?
The 24th of January.
To 4:30, you said?
Yes. And I know that you're all doing your homework and reading your book study for our, we'll talk about that next board meeting.
Yes.
Chapters one and two. We'll have fierce conversations. All right. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education enter into closed session to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. The minutes in the audio recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed under 2011 Iowa Code 21.5 LJ. Or 1J.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by...
We need to roll.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. We'll start...
And before we do that, just as an FYI for those in the audience, that there will be no action following the closed session. However, we will go to an exempt strategy session for negotiations, which will last a few minutes. So just as an FYI to those in the audience.
Okay, we'll do the roll call. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hasman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
And Dr. Canyon?
Yes.
Okay, I would ask anybody associated with the closed session, or not associated, please leave the room. And I think this is going to be the end of our broadcast, so thank you.
We're actually going to move across.